Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the meeting of the Town Council for Tuesday, June 23rd. I also want to remind people that this meeting is being broadcast through WCA TV, Watertown Cable Access, and it is a Zoom meeting and may be joined virtually. And all the information is on the town's website. And if you click on the agenda, you can get what you need to dial in or join in by computer. So at this point, can I get a roll call, please?
Council Bays? Council Donato?
President.
Council Feltonner?
President.
Council Gannon?
President.
Council Canelis?
President.
Council Palumbo?
President.
Council Pittoirelli?
President.
Council Woodland?
President.
President Sedaris?
President, thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public forum. Is there any member of the public that wish to be heard at this time? You can use the raise your hand button. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, which is the examination of minutes. Can I get a motion on the minutes of June 8th?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we adopt the minutes of June 8th as written, but there's one small typo. It says, "Agenda should be changed to minutes."
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Can I get a roll call, please?
Council Donato?
Yes.
Council Feltonner?
Yes.
Council Gannon?
Yes.
Council Canelis?
Yes.
Council Palumbo?
Yes.
Council Pittoirelli?
Yes.
Council Woodland?
Yes.
Council Bays?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is President's Report. I don't have anything this evening. We'll move on to motions, orders, and resolutions. And 6A is a resolution authorizing acceptance and expenditure of a gift of funds in the amount of $64,786 to the Watertown Food Pantry from 255 donors for the period of April 27 to June 17, 2020, in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Mr. Manager.
I thank you, Mr. President, and members of the Town Council. Again, I'm very pleased to forward the email correspondence from Anne Marie Gagnon, the Director of Senior Services, indicating that the Watertown Food Pantry continues to receive general support of both food and cash donations from various individuals, groups, businesses, and foundations in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. For the period of time, April 27 through June 17, cash donations were received totaling This amount represents 255 donors, various individuals, groups, and businesses, and foundations. And as Ms. Gannon indicated, email correspondence of note, are 10 donations, if you will. They are as follows: $1,000 from the Armenian Memorial Church, $1,000 from Bay State Consultants, $1,000 from GM Walsh Plumbing, $1,250 from St. Stevens Armenian Church, $1,500 from Grace Chapel, $1,500 from Arsenal Yards, $1,500 from Roche Brothers, $2,500 from Francis Market, $5,000 from the Cambridge Savings Charitable Foundation, and $5,000 from the East Bank Charitable Foundation. Those 10 donations, Mr. President, and members of the council, represent $21,250 of the $64,786. As Ms. Gannon had indicated, donations are used to purchase food from partners, including the Greater Boston Food Bank, Russo's, and various local groceries. I'd like to echo Ms. Gannon's comments about special tanks to the Watertown Community Foundation for processing credit card donations for the food pantry. I'm also very grateful of the community's support and tireless efforts of the Food Pantry Coordinator Kathy Cunningham and her volunteer team. Just by way of additional background, Mr. President, as you remember, back on April 28th, Town Council authorized approval of the acceptance of gift of funds totaling When you add the dollar amounts before the resolution tonight, that's $105,479 that came in as related to and helping our community, various folks, and we're very, very appreciative related all these donations related to the COVID-19 pandemic. So again, Mr. President, members of the council, respectfully ask your favorable consideration of the resolution approving acceptance and expenditure of gifts of funds in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 53A.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Can I get a motion?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the gift of funds for $64,786 for the Watertown Food Pantry.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Can I get a roll call, please?
Council Feltonner?
Yes.
Council Gannon?
Yes.
Council Canelis?
Yes.
Council Palumbo?
Yes.
Council Pittoirelli?
Yes.
Council Woodland?
Yes.
Council Bays?
Yes.
Council Donato?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. Next item is 6B, a resolution approving the acceptance of gift of tangible personal property of a used 32-inch Vizio flat-screen television from the estate of Mr. Ted Wayne. Mr. Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, and members of council. Again, this is the second of three agenda items that Ms. Anne Marie Gagnon has sent along. This is indicating that Watertown residents Marjorie and Stephen Wayne graciously donating a used 32-inch flat-screen television from the estate of their late father, Mr. Ted Wayne, for use at the senior center. As Ms. Gagnon had mentioned, the television will be mounted to the wall, allowing the senior center staff to stream postings for daily programs and services and upcoming events. Pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A and 1/2, municipalities are authorized to accept gifts of tangible personal property with the approval of the Town Council. So what's before you, Mr. President? Members of the Town Council, respectfully ask your favorable consideration of the acceptance of gift of tangible personal property, a flat 32-inch flat-screen television from the estate of the late Mr. Ted Wayne. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Can I get a motion approving the acceptance of this gift?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the gift of the flat-screen TV for use at the senior center.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can I get any discussion? Roll call, please.
Council Gannon?
Yes.
Council Canelis?
Yes.
Council Palumbo?
Yes.
Council Pittoirelli? Council Woodland?
Yes. Yes.
Council Bays?
Yes.
Council Donato?
Yes.
Council Feltonner?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. The next item is a resolution approving the acceptance of gift of tangible personal property of eight pre-owned Lenovo ThinkPads via the Watertown Community Foundation and the efforts of Ms. Natalie Singer of Brandwatch. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the council. Again, Ms. Anne Marie Gagnon had forwarded correspondence indicating that the gracious donation of the eight pre-owned ThinkPads will be made available to residents who need assistance accessing the senior center's virtual programming and supportive services via Zoom and Facebook, and will help to greatly reduce social isolation brought on by COVID-19 pandemic and social distancing. So again, Mr. President, members of the council, under Mass. General Law's Chapter 44, 53A and 1/2, respectfully ask Town Council's favorable consideration of the proposed resolution to accept the gift of tangible personal property of the pre-owned ThinkPads. Mr. President, members of the council.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Can I get a motion approving this gift?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the gift of the eight computers, ThinkPads for use by the senior center.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Council Canelis? Council Pittoirelli?
Yes.
Council Woodland?
Yes.
Council Bays?
Yes.
Council Donato?
Yes.
Council Feltonner?
Yes.
Council Gannon?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. The next item on the agenda is 6D, which is a resolution authorizing a transfer of funds in the amount of $45,416 from the fiscal year 2020 Town Council Reserve account to the fiscal year 2020 Transfer to Capital Projects. And it is a radio room at Arsenal Yards account in order to move forward with addressing the future radio needs of the town. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the Town Council. The administration's presentation tonight, I provide some, an opening, a very brief opening, and then Fire Chief Robert J. Quinn will speak to the proposed transfer of it for you subsequent to Chief Quinn's presentation. Then I would speak to the financing of the proposed transfer. And just by way of background, as indicated, the Council President Sedaris had mentioned, this Chief Quinn and four correspondents that related to moving forward with the addressing the future needs of the town, as indicated in Chief Quinn's correspondence, as part of the upgrade and enhancement of the system, we need to add repeaters, transmitters, microwaves, and additional equipment on the rooftop of Building C at Arsenal Yards. That would entail Boilston Properties to also provide a room on the top floor of the building to house the equipment necessary for the town's radio equipment. So at this point, Mr. President, members of the council, I'd like to have Chief Quinn speak about this proposed transfer in order to step moving forward with addressing the future radio needs of the town. Mr. President, members of the council, Chief, Fire Chief Robert Quinn.
Welcome, Chief Quinn.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mr. President, and members of the Honorable Town Council. As I stated in my attached memo, in November of 2019, the town contracted with Nelson Communications for an evaluation of the radio system of the Police Department, Fire Department, and Department of Public Works. And the final report was presented to the town on April 20th, 2020. The report contained an extensive report on the best way to move forward for the future radio needs of the town. As part of the upgrade and enhancement, as the manager said of the system, we'd need to add repeaters, transmitters, microwaves, and additional equipment on the rooftop of Building C at Arsenal Yards. This would entail Boilston Properties to also provide a room on the top floor of the building to house the equipment necessary for the town's radio equipment. As part of the cost incurred, we'd need to provide to Boilston Properties an amount of $45,416 to cover the cost incurred for the town's construction of the radio room to our consultants' recommendations. You have the attached proposal from Boston Properties for the necessary cost of the room, as well as the proposed lease of the space for a price of $1 per year, which, this will include top floor space for the radio room, space on the roof for the equipment, 24-hour access to the building, emergency generator power, and the oversight of the project at no current or future costs to get the room completed. The money for the room cost is provided in the cost estimate by Nelson Communication, which was also submitted as part of our capital improvement plan requests. Also attached is the report from Nelson Communications. As this building is currently under construction, Boilston Property needs a commitment for this money as soon as possible to get the radio room constructed to satisfy the needs of the town. And I'd like to request that this funding be made available for Boilston Properties now so that we can move forward with the radio enhancement designed by our consultant, as our current radio infrastructure is nearing the end of its lifespan, and we need to get set up for the future. Thank you.
Mr. President, members of the council, just prior to ending the presentation, two points that I wanted to mention is back on page 51 of the fiscal year 2021 budget message dated June 8th, the police radio system replacement totaling $1,00167, and the fire radio system replacement totaling $535,000, the two capital items contained in the fiscal year 2021 Capital Improvement Program that will be included in future loan orders or a transfer of funds request. Those two items, the $1.1 million and the $535,000, are related to the proposed transfer of this evening of $45,416 from fiscal year 2020 Town Council Reserve to the fiscal year 2020 Transfer to Capital Projects, the radio room at Arsenal Yard. So, Mr. President, members of council, respectfully ask your favorable consideration. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Can I get a motion on this resolution?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the transfer of funds for $45,416 to construct the public safety radio room at Arsenal Yards.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Can I get a roll call, please?
Council Palumbo?
Hold on, hold on. Council Palumbo has a question.
Just really quickly, I just want to, someone could repeat the relationship between this equipment and the two loan orders that Council, Town Manager. I'm not sure what the relationship are between those two.
Mr. Manager.
Yeah, Mr. President, the Council Palumbo's query, the relationship is that these are, these are, as Chief Quinn alluded to, the consultant that both Chief Quinn and Chief Lohn and DPW are working with had recommended setting up this radio room or an area where they're going to need all the equipment that Chief, that the, that Chief Quinn alluded to, whether to be repeaters, transmitters, microwaves, and et cetera. The relationship is to move forward with the future radio needs of the town. This $45,000 is part of, which will be an additional, significantly more money, the $1.1 million and the $500,000 for addressing the radio needs. So I think it wouldn't be appropriate if we didn't mention that this is the beginning, you know, very nominal seed money for a significant amount of monies. As Chief Quinn alluded to, the radio, the current radios being, radio systems, if you will, being utilized by our fire and police departments are nearing its end. So that's the relationship.
Council President?
Yes, continue.
Just a bit, so that in order for us to spend the additional money needed to upgrade the radio systems of the fire and the police, this is a necessary step that provides the ability to do the upgrade. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Quinn. Council Canelis?
Thank you. Certainly, we know that our community has changed, and, you know, we need greater communication. And I'm looking at page 20 of the Nelson Communication Report, and it says, "Arsenal Yards development will require a local transmitter and receiver due to the building density planned. This will minimize the need for BDA's in the buildings." May I get a clarification on what BDA's represents?
Yep, Mr. President and council, that, those are bidirectional amplifiers that we need to put in a lot of different high-rise buildings throughout the town as part of the, when a building is built, we have to put them in so that we can have transmission capabilities inside the high-rise, because sometimes these buildings are built and there's dead spots, and the building owners are, need to put in these bidirectional amplifiers or BDA's into building so that we have clear communications inside buildings. By Arsenal Yards allowing us to put the transmitters on their building and right in that general area, it will certainly reduce the need for the BDA's in that area, because we'll have better transmissions. The BDA's, just sometimes there's dead spots, and it has to make sure the radio transmissions get to the necessary spots.
If it were not for the density of the Arsenal Yards development, would we actually need to go into this particular area with this type of transmitter?
No, what happened is, is the, when we did the coverage maps of the town with the consultants, because of the height of the building there, we, the height of the building will provide with better transmission capability throughout the entire East End. Right now, we're using a site on Fire Station Number Two and another station, another site on Coolidge Hill Road, and this particular one will provide us with other site, and it'll be, because it's up higher, it's really going to give us a lot better transmission capability throughout the entire town.
And I also noticed a flow chart, so much paperwork here, a flow chart on page 19. Would there actually be any sites eliminated once this particular location comes into service?
Well, this would be an additional site. Right now, we have several sites around town. This would be an additional site. We probably would not use the Coolidge Hill Road site anymore. This would take over that site, but we would still use the site at Station Two, possibly, and the other fire stations. But this one, if it works properly, then we won't need to use the other sites in the East End. So it's, we will still need the site at the Oakley Country Club and Station One, and so we'll still need all the sites. We're just trying to expand the capability of transmission and receivers to have several sites that do both. Right now, we don't have that capability, and it's going to provide us with a much better radio coverage throughout the town.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, can I get a roll call, please?
Council Palumbo?
Yes.
Council Pittoirelli?
Yes.
Council Woodland?
Yes.
Council Bays?
Yes.
Council Donato?
Yes.
Council Feltonner?
Yes.
Council Gannon?
Yes.
Council Canelis?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, chief. Next item on the agenda is a resolution authorizing a transfer of funds in the amount of $1,825,050 from the fiscal year 2020 Debt Retirement Short Term Interest Account to the fiscal year 2019 Transfer to Capital Projects, Town Streets and Sidewalks Transfer to Capital Projects, Town Philippa Lights and Transfer to Capital Projects, Three Elementary School Project Accounts. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Town Council. This is really, really a good government proposed agenda item or a transfer, a proposed transfer before you. As you're aware, Mr. President, members of the Honorable Town Council, back a week ago today, the town received competitive bids from bond writers on a $15,625,000 20-year general obligation bond issue. The town received a total of eight bids on the bonds, and Janey Montgomery Scott LLC was the winning bidder on the bonds with an average interest rate of 1.471%. We had forwarded the, having sand boards affirming the town's AAA bond rating for this bond sale, as well as the report itself. The town went to the bond market to finance infrastructure improvements by permanently borrowing for projects and items from seven loan orders the Honorable Town Council previously approved on June 25 and September 10, and on February 25, and again on April 28, 2020. Monies are budgeted in the fiscal year 2020 Debt Retirement Short Term Interest Account to apply to the original loan order amounts, and thereby reducing the permanent borrowing amounts for some of the related projects. The three items that I wanted to speak to tonight, Mr. President, members of the council, the first one was, back on September 10 of 2019, the Town Council approved an elementary schools owner's project manager design services. The original borrowing was for $4,087,500. In the fiscal year 2020 budget, we have $559,000 to be applied toward the pay down of that original $4 million borrowing. That would leave the permanent borrowing of $3,521. But the footnotes that I wanted to call your attention to, and that's why I mentioned about good government issues, we only, one of the things we're doing, we had this discussion before, we were not able to borrow all, for all three of the OPM schools, for the free elementary schools, because the Lowell School hasn't started yet, and if we borrowed the monies permanently, would have to pay the dollar amounts off in five years. So thus, the footnote we have below indicates that the owner's project services related to the Lowell School totaling $1,144,277. We did a short-term borrowing, a bond anticipation, no borrowing, for 359 days. Additionally, the premium of $1,255,153 was applied to the loan order, which resulted in a permanent borrowing of the elementary school OPM designer services, the $1,122,445. And additionally, the streets and sidewalks, the Town Council authorized back in September 10 of 2019, we had monies available to pay that down in the fiscal year 2020 budget of $1,139,600. Again, the footnotes, we received another premium on that totaling $830,775. Thus, the permanent borrowing is only going to be $529,629. And then lastly, the Town Council's approval of the Philippa Lights and Scoreboard Project back on April 28, the proposed loan order was $1,301,825. We have $126,450, which was scheduled to be paid off toward that bond. Thus, that comes up, the three components of $1,825,50. The utilization of unspent debt retirement account monies for the acquisition of payment of capital equipment that is consistent with the Town Council's ongoing budget policy guidelines to make capital expenditures, including debt and exclusive school building for the future initiatives, equal to at least 7.5%, 8% of the operating budget in order to maintain and improve its infrastructure, facilities, and equipment. And then additionally, reducing the permanent borrowing amount is consistent with the very strong debt profile, which is one of the factors standing appozed cited in the affirmation of the town's AAA bond rating. So again, Mr. President, members of the council, in order to partially fund the loan orders, two were on September 10 and one on April 28, respectfully ask your favorable consideration of proposed transfer. It would be, the transfer would be $1,825,050 from the fiscal year 2020 Debt Retirement Short Term Interest Account to the fiscal year 20 Transfer to Capital Projects Town Streets Sidewalks, $1,139,600, Transfer to Town Capital Projects Town Philippa Lights and Scoreboard, $126,450, and Transfer to Town Capital Projects the Three Elementary School Project OPM, the $559. Again, I ask your favorable consideration of this, reducing the permanent borrowing dollar amounts. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Can I get a motion on this transfer?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the transfer of funds for $1,825,050 for the capital projects.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Council Pittoirelli?
Yes.
Council Woodland?
Yes.
Council Bays?
Yes.
Council Donato?
Yes.
Council Feltonner?
Yes.
Council Gannon?
Yes.
Council Canelas? Council Palumbo?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. The next item on the agenda is a resolution authorizing a transfer of funds in the amount of $1,778,200 from the fiscal year 2020 Debt Retirement Short Term Interest Account and the fiscal year 2020 Town Council Reserve Account to the fiscal year 2020 Transfer to Capital Projects Arsenal Park Account in order to move forward with the Arsenal Park Phase A improvements. Mr. Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, members of the Town Council. Just by way, the presentation tonight will be, I'll provide a brief background to the proposed transfer. Then we would have Glenn Howard from CBDM Smith speaking and then I would close it with the proposed financing of the project Phase A before you this evening, Mr. President, members of the council. But for background purposes, as you're aware, there was on, at the May 12 Town Council meeting, there was an informational presentation on the proposed renovations and improvements related to Arsenal Park, which was something related in part to proposed conceptual recommendation fourteen of the fiscal year 21 to 2125 Capital Improvement Program. Subsequent to that, we did indicate that we would be looking to come back before Town Council, at this Town Council meeting. Email correspondence from Mr. Howard regarding the results of the bidding of the project on Wednesday, June 17. As indicated in Mr. Howard's correspondence, seven bids were received and the bids ranged from a low of $1,184,000 to a high of $3,363,275,000. So at this point, Mr. President, members of the council, I'd like to respectively ask Mr. Glenn Howard from CDM Smith to make a presentation on the bid results and the recommendation to move forward. Mr. President.
I'm just muted. Glenn, welcome back.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mr. President, Honorable Town Council. You can hear me? Can anyone hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Let me just. Sorry, I'm trying to find the presentation here. Can you see that? The presentation cover?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, had some difficulties here. All right, as the manager mentioned, we presented on May 12, we had a pretty lengthy presentation, so I'm just going to do a very short summary of what we're talking about and then go through the bid results. We presented the project overview at the last meeting, identified that we're talking about here is just the Phase A. It's more of a passive open space, kind of in an underutilized area of Arsenal Park now. It's going to provide the primary connections to Arsenal Yards and ultimately, there'll be a pretty extensive promenade that extends past the court area and connects it to the rest of the park. It's just in an enlarged plan showing the primary components with the entrance gateway. We went through the details last time, the entrance gateway, the performance pavilion that was designed in conjunction with this burned lawn area for potential performances and other community activities, some terrace lawn areas and overlook rain gardens, pretty extensive stormwater system and stone dust bosque area with trees and picnic tables. We talked about the industrial concept of the entrance gateway with very kind of dim lit Arsenal Park signage as you come in and as you leave the park. Brick piers and caps to pick up on the the nature of the buildings that are in Arsenal Yards adjacent to the park. We talked about the sense of paving pattern that we were not going with typical concrete. We're using exposed aggregate that could be colored and create patterns that would, again, continue down throughout the promenade throughout the entire length of the park and give us some nice character and add some nice aesthetics and be a continuation of some of the elements that are within Arsenal Yards. We talked about the, again, industrial nature of the performance pavilion that it picks up on some of the softer textures of the wood. And then we went through some of the detailed design, the exposed aggregate concrete, the precast walls, kind of have, we specified tectura precast, which are a little more expensive when it comes to walls and stairs, but they, they're a lot more durable and they give you, you have some control over the density and structure of the concrete and you end up having more of like a granite look, but less cost typically, so. So the bids came in, as the town manager mentioned, on June 17. The low bidder was $1,884,000 combined with the base bid and the alternate, which is the pavilion. The pavilion was $92,000. The base bid was $1,792,000. Disappointing bids from our perspective, our estimate was $1,655,000, which included contingency, so we had a fifteen to twenty percent bust in our estimate. So obviously, we spent the last couple of days looking at that until we have an actual bid tabulation from the contractor. It's difficult to say exactly where the bust in our estimate versus the bids were, but there's a couple of things related to the bids. We did have three low bids that ranged from $1,884,000 to $2,241,000. So that's typically a good sign that what was in the construction package was fairly solid and those are pretty good estimates. Also, which is very unusual, we had no questions during the bid period at all. There were no addendums. And that's usually a sign that the bid documents were clear and concise, at least the contractors understood what they were bidding on. The unusual part is that we had bids in the $3 million range. Sometimes you do, you know, this is in a strange environment we're in anyway, so it could be just, you had some contractors that were not really that hungry for work and so they threw in some high bids, hoping that not a lot of people would bid on this. The fact that there were seven bidders and that we did have three fairly close-range bids kind of shows us that the $1,884,000 bid is pretty good and I'll talk about a couple of the variances in our estimate in a minute. The low bidder was Heimlich Landscape and Construction. For those of you who remember, they just completed the, last year, the Filippalo Dog Park and Park renovation. We were very happy with the work and results out there. We've worked with them for many years on multiple projects and they can begin work immediately. They've got, they've got the resources and they're ready to begin if the Town Council authorizes this this evening. Some potential variances for our estimate. I've identified about $60,000 worth of either low or missing items in our overall estimate. A couple were related to stormwater structures and some landscaping. The landscaping was probably one of the largest items in here, if you remember the presentation from last time. We had about $250,000 with the landscaping and rain gardens to really improve the aesthetics and make this, you know, like I mentioned in a letter to the town manager, a jewel of Watertown open spaces, which has come up in some of the meetings that we were in. You know, having higher quality features on this park were very important during the meetings. So based on the bids and our, you know, evaluation, what we can tell from the estimates so far, like I said, once we have a bid tab from a contractor, we'll be able to see a little bit more where the difference between our estimate and the low bid was. But the bid appears to be good in comparison to the other bids. Like I mentioned, we have a lot of high-quality materials on this. We had a lot of conservation commission and community input in both the overall design and the materials that were selected. And we had a lot of coordination meetings with Boilstone Properties with Arsenal Yards to ensure continuity of materials and a smooth transition between Arsenal Yards and Arsenal Park. We also recommend the consideration of alternate one. We, you know, we believe that performance pavilion really sets off the focal point. The whole design was kind of centered around a, creating a focal point and that pavilion really would create the centerpiece. So the alternative is we could rebid the project. Rebidding as-is, we don't think would provide any better bids. We believe we would have to reduce some of the quality of the materials that are specified, maybe remove some of the walls, some of the terraces, but we don't think rebidding it, we don't think it was a bid environment issue. We think those three low bids are fairly good. So we had originally talked about two readings to the council that funding the town manager has come up with, really has taken some time off this schedule. We've been able to limit it about about three weeks from the schedule we presented last time. So if this was to be authorized this evening and we could get the contractor, contractor under agreement by the end of the month, he could get mobilized in early July. And I won't go through all these pieces, but, you know, that could mean project completion and acceptance by late October rather than late November, which is what we were presenting last time. So with that, I will move to questions or back to the town manager.
We'll go back to the town manager first.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President, members of the Town Council. Just, just as we mentioned back on May 12, there was, the intent had been to bring forward a proposed loan order for Arsenal Park Phase A improvements. At this time, monies totaling $988,233 are available in the fiscal year 2020 Debt Retirement Short Term Interest Account to support funding of this project. As a result of not borrowing for some of the planned items in fiscal year 2020, we provided Mr. Tracy a developed spreadsheet outlining seventeen items that we're not moving forward with in fiscal year 20. As had mentioned previously, the utilization unspent debt retirement account monies for capital equipment is consistent with the Town Council's ongoing budget policy guideline and also reducing permanent borrowing amounts is consistent with the strong debt, very strong debt profile, which was one of the factors in Stan and Poor's rating services cited in the affirmation of the town's AAA bond rating. Additionally, as is stated on May 12 and then again on an email correspondence from Mr. McGoon, $200,000 from the Housing Choice Grant is available to support funding of the project. Additionally, as indicated in the June 18, 18th email, the $500,000 contribution from Boilstone Properties will not be available to support Phase A of the construction of the building, as construction of Building G hasn't started. And lastly, the remaining balance to move forward with the project is, would be, is available monies in the council reserve totaling $789,967. So is, again, Mr. President, prior to turning back to questions from Mr. Howard, respectively recording to move forward Arsenal Phase A improvements with the proposed transfer, as Mr. Howard indicated, this would allow the project to start almost three weeks earlier. Certainly, a lot of good government issues utilizing debt retirement monies for capital projects and reducing permanent borrowing amounts. So what's before you, Mr. President, members of the council, is a transfer of $1,778,200. Put together a spreadsheet that shows that would be funding the base bid of $1,792,000, the alternate one to $92,000, so that would be the low bid of $1,884,000, a five percent contingency of $94,200,000. That's $1,978,200. Take off the Housing Choice Grant of $200,000. The transfer before you this evening would be $1,778,200, which is made up of the debt retirement dollar amounts of $988,000 and the Town Council Reserve of the $789,000 amount. So at this point, that concludes the administration's presentation, Mr. President, respectively ask your favorable consideration, the proposed transfer of $1,778,200 to move forward with Phase A Arsenal Park renovations and improvements. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Can I get a motion on the transfer?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the transfer of funds of $1,778,200 for Arsenal Park Phase A improvements.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Council Canelas?
Thank you. For the record, I had stated during the previous presentation that I did have concerns about the stone dusk in the bosque area. It was also noted that periodically the stone dust would have to be swept from the, from the promenade area because there will be tracking to some level. I'm not going to vote against the proposal. I think this is a good project, but I still do have concerns about the stone dust because we're looking for an area that's going to be as maintenance-free as possible. It's going to be a high-traffic area. And also on page 12, when we speak about the steel table with the IPE seats, I had also mentioned that since this is a permanent structure and is not mobile and the seats cannot be moved, I think the square seats make it a little bit difficult to access the area, whereas a seating that would be round or oval would be a little bit easier to access, especially they want to move other items if somebody has a stroller or something that's going to be brought up close to the table. And I also noticed that there's slating on the seating. I think it were a stainless steel seat as same as the table. That would be a better maintenance option. Thank you.
Council Palumbo?
Thank you. This one is wondering, Glenn, and you might have this in, and I don't have the original documentation, the original budget, but I know that we can get reimbursed for any COVID-related costs on construction. Do you know if this bid included, detailed out any of the COVID-related things that they might be doing like wash stands and different things that contractors are supposed to have in place given the, given the pandemic?
No, I don't know if he included items like that in his bid. Like I said, because I'm concerned about our estimate being low anyway, I'm looking very forward to seeing his schedule of value so I can make a comparison between everything we estimated and what he estimated, but I'm not aware of any specific things that he included related to COVID.
Because we can get reimbursed for some of those, so just if you keep an eye on that, maybe there is something that we can, we can submit to Mr. Tracy. I know he's been monitoring this pretty closely. And construction, they have some pretty strict, pretty strict rules around construction in order to abide by COVID-19 regulations, so just to keep that in mind. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Council Feltonner?
Thank you, Mr. President. More just kind of a couple of comments. I'm assuming that the honey locust trees will be seedless, podless, thornless, not a native honey locust, given the use here. I am disappointed. There's really not much synergy, big benefit to the public here. To me, it's more of a enclosed tree. It's going to take about twenty years to get this canopy of the, for the Arsenal Yards. And the pavilion design is a, eye feature is kind of underwhelming to me. It would have been great to have a water feature. And so just, I'm not voting against it. I know a lot of work has been done and it's great that financing has been identified and it sounds like you're still hopeful for the same timeframe that you've put in the bid. But I just wonder, you know, there's so many trees being planted. It seems like it's a missed opportunity for some kind of synergy with the community of the schools, whether it was more of an orchard idea, the forest habitat. You know, bosque is usually an area for migrating birds. So I just put that out there as the conversation goes and develops. I would like to see more input from the public and the council. I'm concerned that the rest of Arsenal Park is just going to not move forward very quickly and it's a pretty urban design park with the concrete. it's it's a pretty urban design park with the concrete versus a lot of kind of the quiet of Arsenal, but the pavilion is identified as an event, planned event space versus a quiet space. So those are my negative comments. Otherwise, I know it's been a long haul and you have done a lot of work. Congratulations in getting this to us, especially under tough conditions here. And I guess my last question is, are you hopeful on the timeframe?
Yeah, like I said, I just had a conversation with Todd Heimlich yesterday because I wanted to get on here and make sure I said, you are ready to mobilize quick, right? Because I know that, you know, there was a plan for kind of two hearings that would have put this out to August, so he said, no, I'm ready to go, so. Contractors always tend to be very encouraging at the beginning, so we will push very hard to make sure they stick to the schedule.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, can I get a roll call, please?
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
Counselor Baze?
Yes.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
Counselor Felton?
Yes.
Counselor Gannon?
Yes.
Counselor Canelis?
Yes.
Counselor Palomba?
Yes.
Counselor Picchirelli?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. Next item on the agenda is an order to release of a highway easement and grant of easements by the town to BP Retail Watertown and grant of easements to the town by BP Retail Watertown and Arsenal Yards Holding at Arsenal Street and authorizing the town manager to execute the aforementioned documents on behalf of the town. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of Town Council. We forward correspondence from Catherine Lord Klein from KP Law regarding the proposed exchange of easements between BP Real Time, Real Retail Watertown LLC and Arsenal Yards Holding LLC together. They're the developer and the town of Watertown relative to the property located at 485 Arsenal Street. The property, as indicated in Ms. Klein's correspondence, the developer received final site plan review approval from the Watertown Planning Board on July 24, 2019, in case number 2019-3, permitting conversion of the property formerly designated as residential to R and D lab, lab sciences and office use for the property. A portion of the project fronts on Arsenal Street and the town and the developer have agreed to exchange certain easements on the Arsenal Street to enable the project to be constructed, operated and maintained and to better manage vehica and pedestrian traffic on Arsenal Street. There were various materials forwarded by Ms. Klein for Town Council's consideration. As Ms. Klein indicated, the town is agreeing to relinquish two portions of an existing permanent highway easement and to grant two permanent building easements to the developer. In exchange, the developer will convey four easements for highway and sidewalk purposes to the town and the public. The Office of Community Development Planning has reviewed all the documents that were forwarded to Town Council. They've approved them and supports the submission by the developers. So, Mr. President, members of the Town Council, I ask your favorable consideration of the proposed order that's before you this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you. Can I get a motion on the release of a highway easement and grant of easements?
Mr. President, make a motion that we approve the order for the easements with BP Retail Watertown and Arsenal Yards Holdings and authorize the town manager to execute the documents.
Is there a second?
Should I suppose so?
Counsel, Counselor Gannon.
Just been reading through the documents, a pretty extensive. Could you tell us where easements would be exchanged, the locations on Arsenal Street so we can know exactly where the easements are? And how does that affect Watertown?
Steve or Gideon, maybe?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. The at the, and I know it's a long set of documents attached, but the very end, there was an exhibit. I can show you mine, but it's certainly small enough scale that you couldn't couldn't read that. But basically, it deals with both the existing entrances and relocated entrances to the project, you know, in terms of on our side, on Boilston's side, there are a couple of places where their buildings were close enough, and because of the change in elevation, they needed to make ADA accessible entrances, which got too close, so they needed some some easements there to accommodate that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, can I get a roll call, please?
Counselor Baze?
Yes.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
Counselor Felton?
Yes.
Counselor Gannon?
Yes.
Counselor Canelis? Counselor Palomba?
Yes.
Counselor Picchirelli?
Yes.
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. New business, any new business to come before the council? Seeing none, communications from the town manager. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Just very briefly, wanted to speak on a couple of items that were in the coronavirus COVID update, the 15th, that were provided to the community, which was dated June 19. Couple of things wanted to mention. First in the first was on yesterday, the town hall has reopened to the public by appointment only. Under the initial reopening, any member of the public must wear a face covering while in the building. Additionally, the public is asked to maintain physical separation from employees and other visitors for at least of at least six feet. Many departments continue to offer residents of business the ability to conduct transaction by phone, online or email. We've provided phone numbers for folks to check on that. Additionally, under the reopening plan, the town hall summer hours will, again, with the Tuesday night to 7:00 PM and then Friday closing at 2:00 PM, will be in effect through Friday, September 4. Tomorrow, Mr. President, members of the council, the following will be opening the playgrounds and tot lots, basketball courts, and then picnic tables and grills, which are by permit only. And then the last item I wanted to talk about, which there was many, many, Town Council was very, very, and appreciate, shout out to them for their enthusiasm in doing and moving forward with an outdoor and flexible seating initiative for Watertown residents. As you know, in an effort to assist local restaurants, the town developed a policy allowing outdoor seating for restaurants and licensed establishments. The town, it was the applications were for temporary outdoor seating and used to allow for the activity to be undertaken in a safe and responsible manner during COVID-19 pandemic. The review process was streamlined with staff level review, and I'm very pleased that through today, there's been 10 restaurants have been provided the temporary, the approval to have the Oakdoon Flexible Seating Initiative. So again, I really appreciate everyone's efforts on moving forward, that Town Council and all staff to move it forward as quickly as possible. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Request for information, any requests for information? Seeing none, announcements? Do we have any announcements? I have one tomorrow evening, tomorrow afternoon at 4:30. The School Building Committee, along with the project architect and the project management team, will be hosting a groundbreaking ceremony for Phase One of the Kenneth and Hosmer Elementary Schools. It will be held at the Kenneth School. Everyone is welcome to attend. Please be aware that you do need to wear a mask and we are going to be social distancing. If you're planning on attending, it is open to the public. Any further announcements? Counselor Felton?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say it's great to see Steve McGoon back on camera, and I would love to see our auditor, Tom Tracy.
Hope that's okay. Any other announcements? Public forum, any member of the public wish to be heard? Anything from Counselor Picchirelli?
No emails from the public for me.
No attendees? Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
Moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
Counselor Felton?
Yes.
Counselor Gannon?
Yes.
Counselor Canelis? Counselor Palomba?
Yes.
Counselor Picchirelli?
Yes.
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
Counselor Baze?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you, and thanks to all who attended, and Attorney Rich for just waving to us occasionally. Have a good night, thank you. Thank you, night, everyone.